All right, we've got a full agenda calling this meeting to order. All right, Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Here, here, here.
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 All right, I don't have any agenda changes and we have no guest speakers. So at this time, we're here, folks who are here for public comment. If you have anything you'd like to say, come on up to the podium, introduce yourself. Please limit your comments to three minutes. All right.
Wendy Colson, I've got the issue on the agenda about the property that's being impacted by the city runoff. Hopefully you guys all got the information again on Dropbox and had a chance to look at that. I would implore you to make the right decision and do the right thing and fix what the city has created on my property. It's kind of a matter of my investment value. I'm afraid I'm going to lose my house and, you know, I would hope the city would do the right thing and fix the problem that they created in the first place. So if you have any questions, give me a call. If you need to see the property again, the erosion has gotten worse over the winter with the melting and the runoff. We're going to have storms all week, so come on by and see what's going on.
Thanks Wendy. Thanks Wendy. Any males here like to offer public comment on any agenda item? Hello.
Hi everybody.
Hi there.
Frank Morrow, 147 Water Street. Thanks for listening to my concerns. Our issues concerning the small cell tower being put over here somewhere, we're going to put it, we're going to figure out where it's going to go. I appreciate, I appreciate everybody coming over and looking at it with me. My, my issue is not with putting it near our property. We're really, we're excited about that spot. It says, I want to get on this agenda here, let me, I just had it on and I lost it. Here we go. Okay, so it says, I just want to read this just so I know I have it right here. Says there are two options for location. The Verizon small cell equipment may be placed on a new utility pole near the driveway at Singapore Yacht Club, or it may be placed on an existing pole very close to the corners of, corner of Morrow's building, which will require some tree removal and trimming. For the co-location in the existing pole in 147, two trees in a public right-of-way would be removed and replaced, which is wonderful. And additionally, the tree on Morrow's property will be trimmed significantly. It says the applicant prefers Morrow's location, but as this will require tree removal and trimming, they would like to keep the 44 Water Street as a backup option if there are any complications with the tree trimming. We are steadfast against the second location. It is right across the street. It is four feet from where the first proposed location was. And I really don't have a problem with the parking space, but that's, there seemed to be moving it because of the parking space. But it's, it's, it's just directly in view of everything across the street. I'm looking to see if the council, when they speak with Fred, could ask him about, or we could talk about, they could talk about another proposed site, which, which we talked about at the last workshop meeting, which was right on the corner here behind this building. And there didn't seem to be any problems with that site and it just hasn't been discussed. I'm just hoping that maybe that if, instead of wording it where if anything happens over on my property, they don't just throw it across the street, which is what they wanted to do in the first place. I just, you know, that's the only issue I have, but thanks for listening.
Thanks Frank. All right, anybody else here in person? Anybody online? Madam Clerk? Nope, all right, we'll just jump right into it then. First up, Sagatuck Historic District Marker Project.
Madam Mayor, you have executive summary on page two of your packet. We also have two guest speakers here to speak to the project. At this time, I would recommend that you turn it over to either Eric or Bill. Here they have to say and some updates.
All right.
Thank you. Happy to be back here again and thrilled with the support that we've had for this project over the last few months, since we met here the first time last fall and approved the letter of agreement back in January. As, as you see in our packet, we've had a chance to come back to have a lot of discussion and some great feedback from council and as well as from staff and spend some time on site looking at the options for the two marker placements in Cook Park and then as well Wicks Park by the chain ferry. And so we had a couple of, a couple of recommendations that we discussed. And a couple of weeks ago, Kate White, DPW, Scott Herbert and City Manager Ryan Heisa and myself were able to walk around and walk the length of the parks on a sunny but brisk day and evaluate all the issues. So in brief, thank you to the council for the suggestions for the chain ferry marker. I think we, we all agreed that that was a superior location to sort of displace the waste, the waste receptacle near the sidewalk and place the marker there, which will help serve as a kind of, kind of wayfinding sign, place marking sign both for the chain ferry as people are in the park and making their way along there. So thank you for that suggestion and we support that suggestion, that suggested location. We had further discussions about the Cook Park marker, which will feature the story of the big pavilion and steamship tourism, which was popular from the late 19th into the early 20th century. Steamships from around the Great Lakes docking and bringing people to Sagatuck. We looked at a few different sites. The original site that we proposed back when we met in January, early January was kind of midway between the water's edge and Water Street. We had some discussion as well about alternate sites in the last month. But looking at the site now that it's springtime and we're able to tromp around and there isn't a foot of snow on the ground, we think the best location is near to Water Street where you see the two stars, either of the two stars on the site map there, with a preference for the site that's to the north, the leftmost or topmost of those two stars. The consideration for that location is when you're looking at the marker, you'll be able to see the Coral Gables. You'll be able to look from that height, be able to look out and see the site of the big pavilion and historic photos really bring that to life. It will also help draw in visitors walking from Jones Park or walking along Water Street or the Butler area to come and check that out. And it doesn't interfere with people using Cook Park, which was, I know, one of the big considerations with the initial proposed location that we had there. We had talked about as well, there was a suggestion of placing the marker closer to the water, which is really appealing in a number of levels. But with all the activity at the waterfront at the summer during peak tourist season, grills and lockers and other boats and things down there, we thought it may just add to the kind of visual noise. And so really preferred that location closer to the sidewalk. So I'm happy to entertain any questions. Bill Hess, who's one of our committee members from the History Center is here as well, no stranger to you all. And we can both answer further questions from the packet or questions you may have today.
All right, council questions.
Thank you. Hi Eric, good to see you. Thank you very much for that change to the Wicks Park location. I think that is a, I think that was a far better spot, so thank you for making that change. Regarding the Cook spots, when Councilman Becken and I, and actually Councilman Dean joined us on his run, we were looking at spots, we had, we had discussed looking at the northwest corner of the building down here. And I just wondered what your thoughts were on that. Obviously that wasn't one of the recommendations being made, but just kind of what your thoughts were on that.
Right, yeah, that's, that's great, yeah. So I did, I did have, we did have a chance to talk about that site as well. One of the, I think it's a great site for a historic marker. I think there were some challenges with it when I went out and looked at the site again for the big pavilion marker, which is with, especially with cars parked along Water Street in the summertime. It's difficult to see across the street and the marker would face inland. You know, would, you would have it from the sidewalk looking towards City Hall, which would require people to turn around to be able to see the water and be able to see where the big pavilion was located. The other factor, when I brought that, when we had discussion within the committee, the Historic Markers Project Committee, was that looking ahead to future years, we've imagined a whole list of other markers that we'd like to develop. And one of them would be a marker that tells the story of the history of Sagatuck City Hall and the founding of the city. There's also, there's also a need to address the indigenous, the history of indigenous people in the community and especially on this site here. And so that seems like a preferable site for those, those markers in a future campaign, a future project. So that was our thought there. Good site for a marker. Did not sort of check the boxes for where history happened with, for the big pavilion marker.
Thank you, I appreciate you considering that suggestion.
Yeah, I'd just like to say thanks for you guys keeping an open mind and at both locations. I really appreciate the fact that you moved the marker up to where you're proposing on Cook Park. I have no problem with having it on the north side of that sidewalk right there. In fact, that was one of the areas that we first met and talked about that day when we were together. Great, thanks.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you for those comments. Yeah, I'd say, you know, public history, definitely collaborative endeavor. So thank you for your openness to work with us of placing markers, historic markers on public, in public parks. It's a really important thing and requires a lot of consideration.
I'm looking forward to seeing it, should be great. Anybody else? All right, thank you. Bill?
There's some concerns about the Alvin County historical marker that's up there. The park that is, is not in great shape. It's really lousy shape. We have a marker for the old schoolhouse in Douglas and there was one of those there as well. We got it removed. So they want to remove them, which I think is a great thing. And looking at the stories that are being told on that marker, we're going to be telling a lot of those. So I think get that, it's got holes in it. I think Mark has looked at it. It looks horrible. So we know who to contact to get that out of there for you. They did it in two days.
Alvin County?
Alvin County. Alvin County is.
Tourist council?
Yeah, tourist council.
So that, that program they have is probably discontinued because it was part of.
They didn't know where the markers were.
Oh gosh.
Part of a trail.
Yeah, referenced a historical trail that you could.
And they're very excited about our project because they can include that in what they want to do. So you want to get rid of it and that'd be a great place for one of our markers as well, so.
Very good.
Thanks Bill.
We'll let the manager follow up with you on that one. Very good, all right, moving on. Special event application, SCA, public art installation at the History Museum and Mount Bald Head Park.
I was surprised, there's more. And when I walked in, I thought, oh Eric's here to support me. I didn't realize that was, but thank goodness you're still here in case there's more questions. So thank you. This was the surprise where you were asking questions last week and I'm like, but no, the History Center owns that land. And you said, but no, we do. So I said, Kate, I've got another application coming to you. So thank you. This is part of the SCA's Quad Community Art Installation Project, of which you know, thank you so much for your approval of the SCA/Cofflin Park Installation. This was an installation, this is an installation that we are proposing that will be down at the History Center's Pump House location that the History Center Board graciously approved. And so we hope that you will also agree that that is a good space for this and that you're also okay with the project itself and how it will be installed. So a couple of things I'll note that are different. Obviously, the approval of plan, that time is long gone. That was when I was presenting this to the History Center way back in February, so never mind that. We will take approval from the city, hopefully whenever we can get this. The other piece of it, which talks about where, the original proposal was going to be Pump House Museum plus base of Mount Bald Head. The base of Mount Bald Head pieces are, have been removed from the project. So when you look at the overhead map, and I'm sorry, there aren't page numbers on this, I apologize, not good on us. Oh, yep, there you see it.
This piece is no longer part of the plan. So that piece goes away. So we're down here in this area. And then as a random strike, because I suspect someone will ask me this, this piece, which appears to be in the water, is actually, it is on the shore because right down, that's low, low water. Well, shortage, it's not floating in the water, it's not attached to something. So we're proposing to put, let's say, holes in the water that will hold windows right there. So that's a deal. Douglas, as you know, off of, wait, sorry, there is actually a boat floating in the water off, off of here. But this is actually anchored to the shore essentially there. It's not floating just that way out.
This piece is one of the other two, I guess I would say, aesthetic kind of constructs. And it's actually similar to what will be in downtown Fenville. The downtown Fenville DDA approved, I don't know, two weeks ago, the installation on the piece of kind of vacant land, like across from library, across from Salt of the Earth, there's a vacant piece of land right there. So they do music in the park and then there's the parking lot and then there's a kind of chunk of property. We are putting there an installation that will be a series of round circles, also with windows that have Plex, the colored Plexiglas. And some, throughout the summer, the Plexiglas in Fenville gets switched out for children's artwork. So just if you happen to do multiple pieces, you'd be in Fenville and then you'd be at the pump house and think, oh yes, I see how this connects together. So just as an FYI.
All right, questions?
A couple of comments. Jamie, can I ask you to put the page 25 back up, please? This information, the, the circle that is in a half, whatever you call it, the displays just south of the dock on the water. I don't know if you got your pointer and can point me at it? Ones that, Kristen was kind of.
See, it's not just me.
Comment is twofold. One is that it's quite a popular fishing place, so you could have a lot of fishing line if it's something that's going to be above the ground.
Up a little more.
Those two, just above to the right.
In the water.
So that's something that I guess you just risk running. And the other though is critical, and I'm not really sure, Ryan's probably going to have to do a little work on this, is that the city, there's a cross river crossing water main that runs in that general area. And it's either this side of the dock or on the other side of the dock. My feeling is it's on this side of the dock. And so you won't be able to pound anything in there without really, I mean, you got to keep a pretty good separation from that. So I don't know, you're going to have to probably get with Darrell out at Cal Lake and look at the, or something.
Yeah, it's well marked. Oh, it's well marked, there's a yellow.
In fact, part of it might be even sticking out of the water with the low.
Well, my guess is that we will just modify this plan and not be anywhere near that. There may be one less crescent of windows. Yeah.
Yeah, but I think those are two things, I guess.
Yeah, we'll require utility locates for any digging that's involved, so everything will be marked out there.
Yes, just mayor, just quickly, the strike date is Friday, September 9th. Can you get that done within the day? I'm just mindful of the Mount Bald Head Challenge activity on Saturday. That what I suspect will be on Saturday, the 10th, if they run it.
For sure, well, and you know what? We'll coordinate with Mount Bald Head Challenge to make sure that we either, and obviously History Center, to make sure we either go before or after that. Just as a quick FYI, in Cofflin Park, we're working with The Bride. So thanks to you guys putting us in touch with them to make sure that we're either leaving it up or striking prior to that day and whatever their preference is. So we are happy to do the same thing with Mount Bald Head. Either we strike it maybe even a day earlier or leave it if they're like, no, we want it there, you know? We'll just be flexible and work with the city in Mount Bald Head on that for sure. Thank you for reminding me of that, Scott.
Thank you. Thanks Kristen, by the way, for bringing this to our attention. We appreciate adding this, I appreciate you adding this to the presentation. I do echo Mark's comments about the fishermen, as well as I've seen people also bring their kayaks up on that small beach, quote unquote. So I would be concerned if we were to limit the usage of that for this installation. So just something to consider as well. And this is all going to be wood construction, correct? There's, it's all based on what I'm reading here. And that the installation dates are going to be, as mentioned by Scott, are going to be the same install and strike dates as the other installation in Cofflin, correct?
Correct.
Other questions?
One more just comes to mind. I mean, is there sort of a plan for this one for, for a little bit of maintenance? Like if the Plexiglas starts to get like kind of dusty and dirty over the course of the summer, somebody's going to come out with a squeegee and sort of keep it looking sharp?
Yeah, well, and actually Scotty Jacobs, who is our artist in residence for the year, is maintaining the landscaping down there at the pump house now. And so Scotty has been quite engaged with us as well as the History Center's board and John Kerr in particular, about making sure that it looks really good all summer. We're, I mean, and we're well aware, there are thousands of visitors to the pump house, which is why we're so excited about this too. So making sure our best foot is forward, not only for the SCA but for the entire community.
Wonderful, thanks.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Yes, another question on that regard. I noticed that in the materials that we have provided, these are not going to be this height where people are going to be walking underneath these. Is that correct?
Correct. I don't, I don't believe so in this, no.
I didn't see any dimensions. I saw the two by four sticks of wood for the stilts for the vertical structure, but I didn't see any dimensions for the actual panel.
Well, no, actually it says, it's a central arch of colorful windows that will reach 14 feet tall by 20 feet wide. Smaller waves, excuse me, of colorful windows will reach six to 10 feet tall, allowing viewers to look through them and across to the downtown into Sagatuck. So there's two different, there's that picture, but then I think Russ, exactly what you pointed out, I'm sorry. And then also, this is another sort of picture. So yes, there's, the idea is that one of the crescents or two of the crescents would be higher and then some of them are lower, somewhat lower.
Continuing that wave, continuing the wave.
Correct, you know, so I think if you were standing back, you'd see things poking up and see things undulating lower. You know, you'd see the whole thing from a perspective.
Yeah, thanks, sorry, I actually missed that in the presentation.
Other questions, comments? All right, very good, thank you.
And again, if anything comes up, we are super happy, once again, to walk with Scotty Herbert. It'll be warmer when we do it this time and super flexible about moving around things. So don't hesitate to say here but not here, totally fine.
All right, thanks Kristen, appreciate it. All right, Maple Street proposal, Mr. Manager.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we have our engineer on the call, Mr. John Moxie with Fleece and Vanderbrink. Happy to introduce this or reintroduce this topic to council. So with Maple Street project, we have three main issues that are going on right now. We have a drainage issue near Maple and Mason, which we've heard comments about earlier in the council meeting. We have deteriorating road base at Maple and North Street, kind of by the wetland area, by the creek down there. That's in really sad shape. And then also just the general condition of Maple overall, which could, can use some fixing. Kind of separate and aside from all of that is the need to replace the water main and the water service lines. And so in my executive summary, which is on page 28, I get into the fact that we received a proposal. We have both the engineering costs to help with these repairs and then we have an estimated construction cost as well. Items one, the drainage issue by Maple and Mason. Items, and item two, which would be the deteriorating road base by North Street. Those would be considered long-term fixes. Item three, which would be the temporary kind of a top coating or resurfacing in the roadway, that would be a short-term fix. I would recommend, as I do in this executive summary, that the council move forward with items two and three until such time that the city can recover funds through ARPA funding, which is the American Recovery Plan, for big fixes with the water service and the water main. And then you have the drainage issue to take care of, or the stormwater issue that Wendy addressed earlier. So as you see from the staff recommendation, we say move forward with two and three. We should study item number one a little bit further. And then I would turn it over, Madam Mayor, to Mr. John Moxie to add any additional comments.
All right, hi John.
Hi, hi everybody. I'm jealous that I'm not with you in person. I look forward to being able to do that again here shortly. Ryan, Ryan hit all the high points, but going a little bit back in time even, we initially approached this with, with more work included and that was replacement of that water main, water services. This is another border, border road, much like Campbell. And so the, the east side of most of Maple Street is the township. And there are township water customers on that side. So we were hoping to include that with, with this project, but they, from a budgeting standpoint, timing standpoint, it didn't work out for them. And that's kind of where item three, instead of a more long-term fix for the pavement itself, turned into more of a, let's, let's do what we can to get to a point where we can deal with the water main and then, and then we can do a more long-term fix on the road. The nice part is the water main at the north end of the project near North Street is much newer. That, that's not really needed to be replaced. So we can, we can fix that area. If you've driven up there, you, you know that the pavement is in really, really bad shape because that, that road kind of sits down in the, in the swamp, in the lowland. So the, the fix would be to basically really improve that base significantly and then raise the road elevation slightly to get it to drain better, make a drier road base going forward. So that, that's essentially the project that's on the table for you to consider tonight.
So a couple of questions. In part one, there's some references to alternatives. You know, one of the things when we walked the property, Nico Leo had kind of made the same suggestion of running the drainage north approximately 700 feet to cross Culver at the city-owned parcel. And Nico thought that was a good idea and we thought that seemed like a great alternative to make some of that water drain in that direction. But then there's also some notes here about inline underground storage at Mason Street is recommended as an alternative and adding a catch basin at Taken and Mason and spillway between Taylor and Maple would also provide benefit. Is that something that could be done less expensively?
John?
We, we think so, yeah, certainly. We, we kind of looked at it with Mr. Leo last year. And, and I think from a practical standpoint, it is feasible to do that. It's a little bit, it would be unique, I guess, as another engineer coming in and looking at this, you know, 20 years from now, I, they might scratch their head, but it's definitely feasible and I think it would help. What we've kind of tried to capture in our estimate here is looking at a range of fixes that, that could include that plus, plus other things. In a, in a traditional sense, when you're developing a piece of land, say, you're building a new shopping mall, you would put stormwater detention basically on that site so that you're controlling the release rate of the water from that site, generally getting it down to what it was before development. When we're working in residential areas and road rights of way, we're kind of limited in what we can do. We have to use a little bit more sophisticated tools than just a, you know, general detention basin that takes up room, basically. You're just creating kind of a pond. So that's what inline detention would be. I believe the city has one other structure similar to this, basically, to try and slow the release rate of water in different places. They do require more maintenance from your DPW staff because you are going to collect debris and things like that as, as we try and slow release rates. But that was what we were envisioning in that first item is just trying to set up a dollar amount that we could kind of look at it closer with property owners, certainly staff, permitting agencies, things like that, and figure out what is the right fix, what should. What should we do here? Because frankly, just the the traditional methods aren't really available to us. So yeah, it could take that form. It could take that form plus other things. It could take other things. Yeah, it was really just intended to be a a starting point to put a budget on paper.
Mr. Moxie, thank you for being here today. Looking at the information for part one, adding a catch basin at Taken and Mason, that essentially would is what you're suggesting is that that would then slow the flow of water during periods of rain to control the water going down through that area towards Maple, down into a potential catch basin that's 700 feet north of Mason, correct?
Yeah, again, when combined with some of these other techniques, you know, like a like a an undersized pipe, basically, an orifice would be like an undersized pipe to to slow the release rate going into the, you know, the downstream collection system. Again, when you put in an undersized pipe, it's going to collect more leaves and debris and everything else. So those structures do take a little more attention, but those are the things we would be considering.
And and I should know this, but that water that's flowing behind Wendy's property, that's a natural creek, right? Or is that just a runoff?
It is a natural stream, yeah. And and I I do want to manage expectations too, that it's a natural stream and natural streams move in a road and that's what mother nature does. To the extent that we can control things, that's kind of what's presented in this proposal. Various improvements and changes over the, you know, the past decades. And Ms. Coulson did a good job of kind of laying those out. We had kind of collected all of the projects in that area that have altered things, changed things. Where where our project would be to try and mitigate those. There's also water running through that natural stream from completely outside of the city that that we really don't have any control over.
Does that creek have a name?
Coulson Creek.
I just wanted to clarify the reason that I brought Nico when Lauren and I walked the property is because for 25 years, he had a foundation and trench footing business, fourth generation. So that's why I brought him. That's why his name is in this conversation. I just wanted to provide some context.
He's not working for the city as a consultant.
I I brought him with with because he's had to deal with water flow and construction and basements. And I thought maybe he could be helpful to Lauren and I and some fresh eyes. So he did have suggestions.
He was helpful.
Yeah, I would I would echo that. It was it was a fun meeting with him and definitely brought some unique perspectives, things we hadn't thought of that I I think could definitely be part of the final final solution.
I guess as a layperson, if you don't mind me just trying to clarify, part one, are there are there parts of this we can do and hold off on others? Is that what we're hoping?
It's kind of presented, well, yeah, the the estimate is based on on kind of rerouting whatever water we can. And that's why I call it kind of a unique solution because it's a unique solution because we're kind of catching stormwater and running it over the natural stormwater to take it to another place. That's that's where it's unique in my mind as an engineer. But that's kind of what the cost estimate is based on. And the cost, you know, we we could implement some other things instead of that. It it really, again, is just kind of meant as a as a starting point to look at, you know, what what is the right solution here? And it could be phased in. There's a lot of options.
Right, and so Madam Mayor, to be clear, John, so I think the question was, are there portions of part one that would provide resolution or or is this just kind of a stepped in approach, which, you know, you'd want the ultimately the $150,000 construction cost? Is there anything in here that would exclude costs is another way to frame this? Is there is there a cheaper cost?
Is there a cheaper way to do this?
Can we help Wendy?
And can we help Wendy?
Yeah, that's a good, good question. So everything, it's 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 stormwater, so it's it's a natural event. It's not anything you or I or anybody can can predict. We have models to try and, you know, at least set some engineering standards. So everything basically in that description, it could be implemented independently and each one of them are going to have a cumulative benefit just like every thing that the city has done, you know, as as the area has developed from the point where it was just open ground to where we are today, has had a cumulative change. So we can have a cumulative benefit. And and yeah, it just depends what what we could do is is pick a number and, you know, which ones of these can we implement for this number? That would be an one way to go with it. We could kind of do a cost benefit analysis and and try and figure out which ones of these solutions kind of get the most bang for the buck.
No, no, that's for council for questions. So John, I think where where I'm at is for council, just in general. I would like to have you come back with a proposal to council specific to part one as far as recommended steps that make the most sense, number one, and that are a kind of a cost estimate, right? I mean, it's all in one, it's it's very cost prohibitive right now. But I know there's a way for us to eventually get there, kind of in a step one, step two, step three. Does that make sense? And to put a cost with that then?
Yeah, we could, we could approach it more like a study and and do just that.
Okay, that that's counsel, that's kind of where I'm at on this one. If we're going to put a lot, that's be personally, if we're going to put a lot of time and energy and money into this, I want to, it's not something that we can all in one fell swoop get done. But there might be a logical way to go about doing it. Would you agree?
I would agree, yeah. I think there's, you know, there's some complicated parts to this. I mean, the the thing that causes me the most pause is, well, two things. One, the proposed solution takes water from one creek and then diverts it to another creek. So I wonder, I don't see a lot of permitting costs in there and I don't know that it would require permitting. But that's that's always a concern when you shift one problem and kind of move it to another area. And then, of course, you don't know if ultimately the solution is going to help Wendy's concern because you have water coming in from other areas. So I mean, what the city ought to do is study the impact of the improvements they've made on their roadway, city owned roadway and see how to kind of mitigate those those issues that they've those urbanization issues that they've caused with stormwater runoff. And there may be a lot of solutions out there with biofilter devices or other things that we we could do. But, you know, again, it's just my recommendation, this is a heavy lift with no guarantees.
A study with several options would be a good way to move forward.
Yeah, and I think we could work with other authorities that are in the watershed that could participate in this.
That's, yeah, that's, that's, that's what I was going to suggest, that we try to find a way to coordinate or discuss this with the township and see if there's a holistic approach to this. I mean, they, right now, there's a huge area that's a natural green solution that should help hold that water. And I just, you know, as as Ryan said, if, you know, if we move water to one place to alleviate one problem, we could create a problem in another place. But if we if we look at this holistically, I think with the township in this study phase, perhaps we could come up with a better solution that helps everyone and doesn't just move one problem to another location.
Right.
So then the other two, part two and part three.
Well, can we keep comment in part one? From a historical perspective and from my own, what I would call priority, I I think Wendy's situation, that intersection to me is a higher priority than two and three. I'll be perfectly blunt or I mean, I'm upfront. I've weathered and been here through the intersection of Maple and North Street. And now that we're seeing lower water levels, you know, you just kind of patch it up as you can. I mean, that's been like that for as long as I can remember. So but I think I actually think the city not intentionally has contributed to that problem. I have to agree with her that because 20 years ago, we didn't have those, we didn't have those ditches and those drain lines in there like running from down Allegan Street and then Allegan down to Mason. And putting years and years ago, Mason Street was gravel and there weren't, there wasn't any, you know, we didn't put road in there till probably the eighties with a curved curved, you know, with a rolled curb to move the water down. And and I got to think there's some solutions that that aren't going to break the bank. And I don't, albeit looking holistically in a green project, I'm talking about a short term fix, you know. The township doesn't seem particularly interested in anything regarding the road. My other concern is part of this study though is bringing in the Algen County Drain Commission. And I don't know what John has to say about that. I mean, oh, there is a, I assume there's a fair amount of water running underneath, you know, from the east side of Maple Street. Either either there's some either we we talked about trying to find some drain lines underneath there, some old ones that were covered. But there's, it's a pretty wet area to the east side of that. And I'm thinking some of that could be very well coming from Blue Star Highway even. And so to me, my perspective is that's that's what I would consider a higher priority at this at this at this juncture. Continue and not giving up, continuing to talk with the township. I wasn't particularly happy with their response regarding any type of participation, just saying, hey, it's your Public Act 51 monies, it's your road, go go do it by yourself. To me, that's not, when you divide how much Public Act 51's monies we get for Maple Street, I bet it's worth five or $6,000. Public Act money funds are not much of a revenue generator, yet they have their own millage for for roads that they turn over to Algen County. So Algen County Road Commission might be another aspect to look at on the bigger side of things. And when we put the road, the this, the the water main in, the new sewer agreement, water agreement that could be coming up could very well mean that part of it, I believe, is that water mains that are on boundary roads are shared infrastructure. And so that then could determine a level of participation in the township's part also. I I really, you know, I'm concerned about Mason and at least that's where I'm coming from.
So from my perspective, what I'd like is for us to do it right. And in my opinion, to really truly study it and all get all the options on the table and do it right the first time will, I think, end up saving us money in the end.
Unless her plan continued to deteriorate and deteriorate, you know, and possibly putting up sheet piling along there as a temporary solution to keep the water moving.
The other, the other thing in full, in full honesty and transparency, I think we have to be careful as a council, at what time do we take responsibility for improvements that have made that affect private property? I'll use the condos where I live as a prime example. We get a ton of water coming off of Blue Star into Turtle Pond, which, as you remember, we were flooded twice and had to be pumped out because of water drain off from Blue Star Highway. So well, but think about it, though. I mean, you start one and you open one can and suddenly you're going to have a lot of cans to deal with, putting it bluntly. And I think we have to be very careful and very deliberate and study what this, how to do, go about doing this the right way. Water issues are going to be continue to be a problem just based on climate issues alone. And to not study this fully and come to a conclusion that is sustainable in the long term, in my opinion, is worth the time and energy to do. The water, you know, we don't, it's not like two years ago when we had all that water. So we're we're, we've got a little bit of time, I believe, to do it right. That's just me. Yes.
Just would echo Mark's comments about this and and based on the videos that Wendy's provided as well as the documents have been provided. From my perspective, that it's a naturally flowing creek. We'll we'll put a resolution on it and be calling it Coulson Creek. But anyway, that's a naturally flowing body of water and it's been there for a long time. And based on what I've seen, pass through the action has resulted in that water now being dropped right there at Mason and Maple, which is added to the water, which is getting back to what the option one here is to move the water further down the road, right? Curb it, however, you're going to do it, which is expensive. But I think there is a short term thing that we need to be looking at to figure out how to get the water away from where it's dropping into the creek right there and moving it somewhere else, whether it's through some of the suggestions that have been made. So I think that's an immediate need because the videos that were shown, when it rains, it comes down quickly from both Mason as well as Allegan and down Maple. So I don't think we can wait to study this forever. I think there needs to be come up with some solutions as engineers, so there might be some possible alternative solutions, less expensive solutions that might take that worry away from the property owner.
Well, maybe moving number one up to a top priority would accomplish both, both, both concerns, you know. I got my own.
It seems to be a city created issue.
As I don't know why we can't capture the road coming down Mason Street before it gets to the creek and then divert it further. Yeah, you know, you know, further west of Mason, when I was there watching water run down there.
I'll be back on your agenda for Monday. So that's part one, that's part one. So that back on the.
Yeah, do you want to talk about two and three?
Yes.
All right, yeah, so North Street, as Mark mentioned, that's historically been a low lying area, but the road base is just crumbles. So what engineer is suggesting is that we lift that up, put in a little barrier that would carry a filter fabric that would carry the groundwater across the street, just elevate that area a little bit more. Again, that's a long term fix. And then I guess Maple Street's no different than some of our other crumbling roads that we have. But, you know, the recommendation would be if we're doing some of this infrastructure work to just do a slurry seal, as we call it, which is like an inch of pavement on top of the road, which is hysterically, and then also gives the the life of the road a little, a little bit more, six to seven years. But we can ask John if this road is a little bit past go on having that be effective if he's still on the call.
Yeah, it's it's been a good discussion. I didn't want to interrupt it. You guys made some really good points. First one, yeah, definitely, I I would wholeheartedly support the number one going with a study. And and frankly, that's kind of what our first order of business would have been because we do have a number of things kind of listed and and picking and choosing amongst those and and looking at those is is basically what that study is. The other point, this is not a county drain, but it does drain into a county drain. So we can check with the Drain Commissioner and see what avenues might be open to us, either from funding or regulatory or whatever there. And then third, I think you were, you were all kind of spot on with the priority order. We would want to do these other things before coming back. The the thought was anything that's going to be done underground, you know, tearing up the road, we would want to do before we came through with, you know, whatever that short term, long term solution is for the pavement itself. So, yeah, those, those were my thoughts. But again, really appreciated the discussion. You guys were right on.
I I had a question about ARP funds and I I know this is maybe premature, but did we have any idea when some of those, that type of funding might be made available? Because I know it was mentioned because it is a possible funding source for some of these larger projects.
I heard on the Michigan Municipal League, live at the league on Mondays, that April is when we should start hearing, but I don't know if you have heard any. The state budget's a live discussion right now and it's hot and heavy. I did get a readout from someone today. What they did say is there's a strong possibility of of historic investment in the state's water infrastructure. A heavy emphasis on drinking water, of course, because of things like lead service lines and and storm and waste. But I, you know, there's also a piece for stormwater in there. So that's one reason why I think studying it, looking at a holistic solution, you know, talking to our counterparts, even if they're not as sort of forward thinking as as we would like to be about this. Because I think there are, there will be an opportunity, I believe, for particularly communities that that work together to to access infrastructure funding. I I mean, once again, this is not, none of this is official yet, but there's talk of of historic investment in the state's water infrastructure.
And along those lines, what what's been made very clear with Michigan Municipal League is when you have multiple jurisdictions cooperating together on projects, they're even more attractive. But they are really emphasizing that. And this is one of those that would be. But they are really emphasizing that. And this is one of those that would be at least two municipalities working together.
So it would behoove us to have our ducks in a row.
Exactly.
Kind.
Yeah.
But I, I'm also sympathetic to the short term, the the short term need to prevent to prevent making a bad situation worse in the short term. So I am sympathetic to to that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes, Madam Mayor, I think it's a good segue into your next agenda item. And then I just want to recognize that we're getting a little short on time.
Oh, yeah.
Not to rush any of these important discussions.
So the water street, water service memo.
Yeah. Here's a pretty nerdy memo.
I will take that as a compliment, right?
As you should, as an engineer. So, John, do you want to just explain this to us real quick as brief as you can be and then give us your recommendation, please?
Yeah. So those of you who have been around the city for for as long as Mr. Becken has knows that there are a number of water services. That were put in just kind of. Where taking the path of least resistance, and this is one of them where it's a water service that comes off the corner of Main Street and Water Street, serving four different properties. Depending on whether the records are right, it it runs under some of those properties. Um, and Cal Lake was out to fix a a leak at the connection point. Uh, and and discovered this because when they turned it off, all four went went down. Uh, we looked at a number of different options, uh, ranging from go in and do the the permanent fix right now to. Put it on our list of other known problems and and roll it into kind of our our citywide thought process. And that that's kind of the the train of thought is is let's put that into our list. As we develop a a asset management plan for the drinking water system and then apply for a kind of more of a comprehensive grant loan package. In the next year's round of of drinking water funding to your to your previous discussion. It seems like we're hearing more and more funding programs coming out daily sometimes. So eventually there's going to be one where this this makes sense and we have a few in mind already.
Just another comment that it really it really does behoove us to have these things sort of ready on the shelf to deploy because, you know, there will be. I I strongly believe there will be funding and I think we want to be first in line for some of this these opportunities. So I just reiterate what I said earlier.
Yep.
Yeah, my only comment is being familiar with the situation John just described down on Water Street. Uh, and Hoffman is that fortunately, that's. Relatively speaking, it's a pretty easy fix because we've got a a good water main. Running between Hoffman and Mary Street, one of our newer. Means in the city in direct lines from those structures to that building when we do the as and I think that's what you're referring to. Or replace the lead services. I'm going to guess they're all lead services along there. They're going to get replaced anyways. That's the time to just shoot individual direct lines right to the water main. The way it currently is exists is against current state drinking water laws. It's actually an illegal setup, though I assume grandfathered in. It's not the only one in the state of Michigan, I'm sure. I hope I'm. Sort of on on the ball there, John.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. The other piece of this is we applied for a grant from Eagle. For an asset management plan. It's probably been two years now almost ago. They severely underfunded that program. One of the things I'm hoping they come with this new water money is is making that. A program more whole, maybe catching some of the communities like we did that didn't score as well. And and that would be the time where where we get in and try and find all of the lead services that need to be taken care of as well as things like this. We put together a kind of a scaled back proposal. After we heard that we weren't going to get the grant. So I think that was attached to the memo. And again, that that's a that's a draft kind of for further discussion, but. In the near future, I think it would behoove us to move forward with some version of that and and be ready for grant opportunities that that come.
I did have one question on that asset management plan. Says one elevated storage tank owned jointly with Douglas. Which one is that?
That's a good question. Um.
That's the first I've heard of this, to be honest.
I I don't think that is true. I'm not sure where that language would have come from. Yeah, the the way it's it's broken out is if an asset is located in your borders, it's your asset is is kind of the the approach.
Yeah.
It it serves it serves the whole system, though.
Yeah, yeah, for a clarifier.
I have not seen one thing on an elevated storage tank in any of our. Current well searches or anything, any link thing like that. If if there was ever a area that may need one, John's counterpart. Who's on the. Water protection. The well water protection group. It might have to be out on the north end of the township somewhere. But.
Okay.
Thank you.
Very good. All right. Next up, small cell application.
Yeah, this is on page forty two. Council's reference up on the screen, we have Cindy Osmond on the call and a representative from Verizon here today.
In person.
So let's, Madam Mayor, I'd start out with Cindy and just get a brief synopsis and Cindy, you're muted if you're. Trying to talk.
If she's there. Cindy?
And you're still muted.
There you go.
As I'm here, I did put in your cover letter, pretty much everything you need to know. There's two locations, like Frank stated. One is on the water side of Water Street and the other is near the corner of tomorrow's building. The one by water would be a new pole and the one by Marrows would be. A co-location. And I think Mr. Lau is in the audience and he can probably answer any questions you have. The one by Marrows would require some tree removal, but. It would probably look better in that location.
Good to see you in person.
Nice to be here in person. I'm starting to actually more like a horse at this point. I can just drive here and don't even have to think about it anymore. Okay, so my name's Fred Lau. I'm with Chaley Tower Consultants. We were hired by Verizon Wireless to locate a small cell. Facility here. We talked about this before. One thing that I I appreciate that you all did was, you know, we tried to locate somewhere inconspicuous as we possibly can. And in this case, we worked with the historic district and got a location that we thought was fine. And then you all last time we were talking. Asked about the consumers' energy poll, which we absolutely love those options. But in this case, the tree block that was around that existing pole was just not going to work from an RF standpoint. So when you asked us to go back and take a the look at that, we went to consumers, consumer says, yep, rock solid. You guys can go on that pole. But what are you going to do about the trees? Because they they have to have it moved to 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 do what they need to do. And then I went to my RF group and said, look, they want us to come over here on an existing pole and he goes, hey, we'd love to go there, but those trees have got to go. Um, and that's, I think, what I expressed to you all last time was we'd love to do it. So what what I submitted was. A plan for co-locating on that pole. With the caveat that the trees that I've indicated have got to be either removed in the case of the one nearest to the pole. Were significantly trimmed and I I did an honest assessment of the height of the existing trees. And RF, our RF engineers looked at that, went, okay, if you're going to put me on that pole, here's where the trees have got to come down to in order to give us a. Good lifetime of service as those trees grow. So it's a little bit shorter than, you know, when you look at it, you're like, well, you gotta go that that low for. Well, because we don't want to have to be trimming them every five days, right? So but it's a good faith effort. So I got kind of everybody on the same page and and this site is except the RF that meets their service goals that they were trying to do in the first place. We did do. A modification to the other design on the other side of the street and moved out of that parking place. We've moved or we worked with the city engineers to. Kind of define where that right of way line was, and that would allow us to move out of that parking space. We still like to have those bollards there just to make sure nobody. Mistakes a pedal for something that's not supposed to be doing and and takes out the pole. But other than that, it gets that parking space. Completely opened up for you all. So that's kind of what we've done since we talked last. I made a commitment to you guys that we would do all that due diligence and get it ready by the by the next meeting. Because to be honest with you, and why would I drive? I mean, I live six hours from here. So I drove six hours just to come up and make sure that that there was clarity on what we're trying to do. And Verizon, this is a a top ten site. For them. This is important to them and they're going to move on this fairly quickly once we get this squared away.
So this would be the first, this would be our first priority, right? And that's what you were showing with the pole across the street was really secondary. It just didn't work out.
That's correct. And I was nice enough, Mr. Morrow, talked to me on the phone several times about the tree that's on his private property. I understand that any of that tree trimming would be Verizon Wireless's responsibility. The city doesn't have the capability to do that removal. And I've already cleared that with our construction group. And he told me I owe him something, but he said that they could they could handle that as well.
All right. Comments, questions for counsel?
It sounds like we are really leaning towards the location closest to Marrows. And that as long as those trees are trimmed or removed in the way that you need to, you will have good sightlines to be able to make. You know, I mean, we just need good service here and that's why we're we're doing it and that location will do that with as long as the trees are trimmed up. And that other location, I I know we keep, you know, we talked about the parking spot. It was really the sightlines of the view of the water. So being over closer to Marrows seemed like the best solution.
And again, from our perspective, we would much rather be co-located on an existing pole.
Perfect.
It it makes everything so much easier for us, makes our timeline shorter. It's definitely a better option, but the trees. Uh, again, are the are the only issue with that side.
Thanks, Mr. Lau. Appreciate you being here today. And and again, thanks to everybody. That's been. This this has been a community project to try to get this located and and it's me. It's one of our major strategic issues that our citizens have brought to our attention. I did ask, and I think it was reviewed, whether it could be placed on the top of City Hall. For a possible location because the tree removal actually has gotten a little bit of traction. There's an email we got today that was forwarded to us from, I think, Petter, right? Regarding some of the tree removals. So trees tend to get a little. Political.
I completely understand.
So, yeah, and I understand from talking with Cindy Osmond that there were some concerns and reasons why it couldn't be placed in City Hall. I just wanted those to be part of the record that that was suggested and what the reasons why that couldn't be done.
Okay. And we did review that. We did reach out to a couple of groups within the Verizon ranks and I did get some initial feedback. I don't have a complete listing yet, but I did email Cindy right before this meeting. There's a myriad of reasons is the rooftop is not a good option. One of the the big things is this. Antenna system is omnidirectional, so we can't really go on the side of the building. It's got to be on the rooftop. One problem with that is the structural integrity of this roof, and I'm not sure of the construction year of this building. But it appears to.
Eighteen hundreds.
So so you can imagine what's going to go into that from an engineering standpoint to make sure it can hold it. Likely, and we've done this before with smaller antenna systems, but even with one a as small as what we're proposing, you're probably going to be in the re. Doing some of the structural members of the roof line, hopefully not all the way down the wall, but certainly on the rooftop. Then you got to make penetrations onto into that roof. Which is going to be problematic. The other thing is it's not really accessible. I or at least it doesn't appear to be. So now you're talking about anytime we have to do maintenance or equipment replacement. Now we're going to bring in a boom truck. And that'll cause delays and we're required to have the thing up and operational in a timely fashion by the FCC. So all that. Is just a it's kind of a nightmare. It drives our installation cost up. It will drive our timelines out. We will have to have a. A lease agreement. In place with the city. And if there's any cost involved with that, that's going to be, again, a cost driver on the install. So. That that's just the first blush. Plus. Since it's an omnidirectional antenna. Mounting it right on the roof itself is not going to be sufficient. It's going to have to come up off the roof, which means it'll be on a mast of some sort, which again will drive costs. And all the structural considerations that I talked about before just multiply.
Appreciate your, Mr. Lo, for for that explanation. That that's simply what I was looking for and.
Yeah, I didn't get to the raceway that we would have been installing.
We trust. We trust.
I just appreciate the respect you showed in listening to that request. So thank you.
Okay.
Anything? So Ryan, not to put you on the spot, but we did talk about if we remove that tree, basically doing a two for one replacement.
Yeah, with smaller street trees.
Tree city. Okay.
Looks good.
The only variable is the tree on private property. So as long as there's no issue with that, the work should be good.
I think you're good.
I just I just want to commend everybody for working together and thanks Frank Morrow for stepping up and really coming up with a collaborative community solution. Well done.
Yeah, very good.
Thanks for driving.
Thanks.
Where did you drive from?
Little town called Terre Haute, Indiana.
Thanks for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, twenty twenty two boat slip management agreement with Sergeant Marina.
Pretty straightforward. Page fifty six will be on your agenda for Monday night, annual event. Happy to address any questions.
Um, just is Sergeant Marine, is anybody a representative from Sergeant here by chance? I'm just hoping that we have more when boats come up. They have a phone number to call or something because we get those questions all the time about not knowing where transient slips are. And if they know that those are available, just having something that's a little bit. You can go on their website, fill out a form, which is what I looked up today. It's just easier when somebody's coming in up the channel and they're trying to find a transient slip to have a phone number to give out or that sort of thing. So since there's city slips, it'd be nice if we could. Do a better job with that.
Suggestion. Thank you. All right, very good. We'll move on to the Wicks Park Bar and Grill License Agreement.
Madam Mayor, this is on page sixty one of your agenda packet. Goes back to, looks like two thousand and nine. Kate, put this together for us. Thanks, Kate. And so I think the the deal is that the awning at Wicks Park goes over the sidewalk. And so this is renewing their. Agreement to allow them to continue to do that. Kate, did I get that right?
Yep.
Good.
Any questions? Doesn't look like it. All right, very good. Okay, with that, we're to public comments on literally anything. Please step up to the podium, introduce yourself and please limit your comments to three minutes, please.
I want to thank you guys for prioritizing this and doing some deeper dives on it. I have been in contact with Janelle Horn, I think, from Eagle. Is that her last name? And it does sound like maybe there are some cheaper alternatives that will but do it like curb cuts, you know, that could mitigate. On the process. And actually, Ryan, you might know this, they were supposed to do some curb cuts. I don't know if that has happened.
I can do it.
Yes. So there might be some things we can do in the meantime to relieve my anxiety about the issue and then contribute to the long term. Success of the project and maybe we don't have to move things. But she also gave me grant opportunities. So I can do a deeper dive with that and let you know what I find. So thank you.
Perfect. Thank you. And we will have a resolution for Colson Creek here. Any other? Hi.
Hi, hi, everyone. Hi, I'm Christine, Wicks Park Bar and Grill owner. I'm just here. The planning commission was nice enough to approve my extension of my barn restaurant into. The address one twenty one Mary Street, which I appreciated. It was a long process and everyone tried to work the best they could together for that. They put conditions on it. I am very concerned about one of the conditions. The other ones, I'm okay with all of them. I know Cindy hasn't had time to write it up just because she's been busy. I know Cindy hasn't had time to write it up just because she's been busy. One of the conditions, I'm only allowed to have 25 seats inside and outside. So in economically anything, it just makes kind of not a lot of business sense to only be able to have 25 people. When the people that are posed with the noise and everything, they definitely have more than 25 people in their establishments that are around me. So I am open to saying that I will shut my outdoor down at 10 o'clock. You know, I'm willing to give a little. I don't even know how this process works. I know I can't appeal unless I go to Circuit Court. I don't know how all that works. I just thought I would bring it here first. I'm willing to make my outdoor not to be past 10 o'clock. We already have noise restrictions on it that I'm totally okay with. So I'm willing to give a little if I can get more seats in my backyard patio there. So I don't, like I said, I don't know the processes or how everything goes. But in the conditions, it's economically not feasible for 25 people for me to run a business with 25 people kind of thing. And I know that when I first did the application, I did say 25 people and I meant inside and then outside as an event space. And the outdoor patio is only used, which we, is in the conditions too, for events. So Cindy will have to see all the contracts that I have with brides, grooms, parties, that kind of thing. There has to be some kind of contract that Cindy has to see for, you know, so I am following all those guidelines. So I'm just open to negotiating a little bit more on the usage of the number. All the other things I'm totally okay with. It's just the usage of the number, I don't think falls in under the conditions that the Planning Commission put on me. So, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anybody else? Anyone online? Ben Clark? There's a hand raised. Hello, I can't even read that.
It's Martha Petter. Hi, I just wanted to thank you on the cell and I wanted to clarify. I love trees, but if I, all I did is I offered that I would donate, help donate a tree if we have to replace a tree there on the parkway, because I've done that. I want to thank you for finding this solution because it's a lot better than looking at the big thing across the street. So anyway, that's all I wanted to, thank you very much.
Anybody else online? All right, all right, very good. With that, move into closed session. Do we get a motion?
We do and yeah, Chris Patterson's here. He's going to.
All right. Very good. Yep. All right, I'm going to entertain a motion. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
Thanks, Fred. All right. Entertain a motion, please.
Madam Mayor.
Let's get over to the SCA. We have correspondence from the high school, very nice note from Tim regarding construction that's going to be starting this spring and into the summer and its minimal effect on parking. And then a letter from Safe Harbor Children's Advocacy Center. All right, with that, council comments quickly, anybody? Bless you. All right, motion, a motion to adjourn, please. All right, motion by Gardner.
Second.
Second, second by Stan. Voice vote, on favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, very good. See you guys at the SCA.